Wonderful. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to our monthly school board meeting. Tonight is Wednesday, September 17th at 7:00 PM. Let's see, it started with roll call. Kelly, can you help us with that, please?
Mr. Andreessen?
Hello.
Mrs. Briscoe? Mr. Bush?
Here.
Mrs. McMillan?
Here.
Mrs. Ost?
Here.
Mrs. Tony?
Here.
Mrs. Linsky?
Here.
Okay, let's go with Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Megan, we have some wonderful news to share tonight. Would you like to help us out with that?
Yes, I would. Thank you so much. We have an honor today for a spotlight today. So I'd like to say that I am pleased to announce the Preschool for All program. At the Mokina Elementary School District has earned the Gold Circle Quality for Accelerate Illinois, the state's quality recognition and improvement program for the early childhood programs. This recognition reflects our program's commitment to meeting or exceeding high standards for instructional quality, staff development, family engagement, and program administration. This designation is based on the results of the recent monitoring visits in the 2024-2025 school year, which included the Eckers Three Observation Tool ISBE Compliance Checklist. The Gold Circle rating is now the program's official standing in Accelerate Illinois, identifying the Early Start Preschool Program as one of excellence. So we all know this takes a team effort. So I have included, or we have included, not only the PFA program here, but all of our early childhood staff. So I'll just read those names, and then we have a few people we'd like to specifically honor that are in the audience today. So we have Emily Presnak, Gina Blasick, Sherri Sofa, Lynn Terrell, Leah Brunis, Melissa Martin, Kelly Kamak, Jennifer Chiapetti, Sarah Andrews, Carrie Grabowski, Heather Sonia. Heather Sonia, where did that come from? I am so sorry. Wow. I love this. Let's try that one again. Heather Sullivan, Dunya Popovich, Laney Maroni, Sharon Tierney, Amy Urb, and then Nicole Steck. So I'm going to pass it over to Rachel to share a couple of words about her staff.
You have your time.
I do. Thank you. This is our second time going through the evaluation process, the compliance monitoring, they call it. When I first started is when we first were awarded the grant. I think to everybody's surprise, the people who applied for the grant, the administrators before me, were surprised. And when Alison Seroni and I stepped into these shoes, it was like, here, you have a grant. And we're like, great, now what do we do? So it's been a labor of love over these last eight years. And Emily and Gina have been there from the beginning and could not be more proud to have them on staff. And they are the ones whose classrooms were, whose classroom was observed and rated. And for those of you that don't know, what is asked of Emily in particular is above and beyond. And every time she's being observed, she thinks she's going to get fired. And she thinks that we're not going to pass. And both times, not only do we pass, but she excels. And I never have a doubt in, for a moment, that we are going, that we would get the gold. I know that Emily and Gina together make a great team. They really support each other. Emily can't do it without Gina's support and her love of the kids in that classroom. Lesson plans are done very thoroughly, and it's not just for the purpose of compliance because they go back. So the lesson plans that Emily writes consistently over the years are above and beyond what is expected of her. The level of observations, when you have somebody following you around, counting how many times you are addressing numeracy, addressing literacy, how many times you sing, which Emily does not like to sing. It's an area of growth, but it's okay. We'll let it slide, Emily. It's okay. How many chairs do you have of varying heights so that when children sit in the chair, their feet can be on the ground and their elbows can be on the table? You have to have a certain number of chairs of varying heights for all children to be sitting comfortably. So what Emily accomplishes just really speaks to her love of her job, her love of children, her love of being a preschool teacher, and how invested she is in this community and the children of this community. They are youngest, most vulnerable learners. And they come to her with, you know, sometimes just learning how to go to the bathroom and not really knowing sometimes how to follow directions, how to be a student in school, how to line up, how to sit down, how to listen to a story. And she takes, she and Gina take all of that. And our kids just flourish. So I just want to give a special recognition to Emily and to Gina because they are the heart of that PFA program. But like Megan said, Melissa and Heather, it takes a team. And they have a great team of support in all of the early childhood professionals. So I'm very proud to say that I work with them, alongside them. I'm honored to be able to support the program. And it's just a joy having those preschoolers in our school. So thank you all for your continued professionalism and your commitment to our students. Thank you.
Well, the good news is I haven't yet, so I hope we can.
I love starting on a high note, and we've got a lot of good things going on here. And thank you for sharing that. That's absolutely wonderful. Okay, let's move on to our budget hearing. We're going to be going over the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget hearing. Dr. Shaw is going to be starting off with her presentation, and we will go from there. Terry, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Oh. Oh.
Thank you for coming. We love having you. We want to say for the entertainment, we get it. But if you've got other things to do tonight, don't feel obligated to stick around. It's entirely up to you, Megan. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for my.
All right. Good evening. And tonight, we're going to host our budget hearing, our annual budget hearing for FY25-26. So the budget timeline hasn't changed. July 16th, we had the information item to the board. August 13th, we had the tentative budget was put on display. I solicited feedback from board members, received feedback from board members, used that feedback to make adjustments. We had the finance committee. We had a very collaborative finance committee meeting where we got feedback from our finance committee members. And so from the tentative budget to the proposed budget, there were changes. And I'm going to talk about all those changes. From the finance committee to tonight, there were some changes, and I'll talk about those, too. And then we had our budget hearing tonight. And once the budget is approved, we file with the Will County ROE, the Will County Clerk, and submit to ISBE. The goal of the budget is to stay within the fund balance parameters that the board has set. And the range is between 33% and 65% per board policy. A little historical perspective, ISBE, the Illinois State Board of Education, identifies a financial profile score for school districts across the state. And I've put up the last 10, 12 years where Mokina has received the highest rating from the state board each year. They've received a financial recognition. Many years, it was a 4.0, which is a perfect score, which really demonstrates the financial responsibility, fiscal conservative nature of Mokina to receive this designation annually. 2022, I'm not sure everything's doubled, but it's still a four. Some of the budget highlights on the revenue side, we did have a slight evidence-based funding increase. We did have, like, I don't really like to use the word revenue and decrease, but we did have a little bit of decrease in our federal funding from Title I. Our local revenue is in increases limited by the property tax extension limiting law, which caps us at 5% or CPI, whichever is higher. And you can see that 2024 is 3.4, and as we go into this fall's levy, it'll be 2.9. And then in Fund 21, our goal is not to have any fund balance carryover. In our expenses, we have all of our collective bargaining agreements. We have our contractual obligations. So those are really salary benefits and our contractual obligations, our purchase services. And those are our people. So we are really, truly in a people business. We employ people who take care of little people. So we're a people business. We also, in some of these expenses we've got are, every four, five years, we do a third set of Chromebook purchases. So that's in this year's budget. And we also have a three-year curriculum purchase. We saved some money by buying it in a three-year increment. We have that in here. And then in our Fund 20, we added our maintenance staff and our capital plan expenditures. Our goal is to have a zero fund balance. So there were some fund balance left over last year, and so we have that spent down. This is the summary of our proposed budget. The beginning fund balances are unaudited. We should see our audit next month. The auditors are scheduled to come in. So it's still unaudited at this point in time. You can see our total unaudited beginning fund balance at $14,488,807, with revenues at 27.3, expenditures at 28.6. We do have a deficit of $1.3 million with an ending fund balance of $13,134,907. And it is a 46% percentage of fund balance to expenditure. And in each of the funds, they're color-coded, where the education fund ends at 41%. Our Fund 20 operations and maintenance is at 21%. So we'll talk about those funds that are in the red that are a little low in a minute. And then in our working cash and our life safety fund, our working cash has a high fund balance. Our TORT fund, we did a purposeful spend down because we don't use that fund with the new ISBE rules that were implemented. And we also don't use the life safety fund. Where does our money come from? Our district revenue, you can see on the left in the table, that $23 million comes from our local dollars. And the big green piece of that pie chart is our local dollars. So Mokina is supported by local dollars and our local taxpayers. Very supportive community. We do get about 9% from the state and about 4% from the federal government. So we do get a little less than 10% from the state, but the majority of our income comes from the local taxpayers. Where does our money go? So like I said, we're a people business. Our money goes to salary benefits and purchase service. When you look at the pie chart, it's blue, orange, and gray. That's salary benefits and purchase services. We're very fortunate to have the community support for the O and M referendum. So we are able to have capital outlay and supplies and materials, specifically capital outlay and supplies and materials in our Fund 21, based on that O and M referendum. So we are fortunate that between our salary benefits, purchase services, it's not more of our budget because we have specific dollars dedicated to address our buildings, our Warm, Safe, and Dry referendum. And again, I'm going to go back to a little bit of our fund balances. So fund balances in all funds. So this is a backward looking from 2024, which is our last audit because this is coming from the actual AFRs. So when you take a look back, you can see that our fund balances, and then the line above it is the fund balance to expense ratio. So the goal is the 33% to 65%. And you can see there were years when we were above the 65%. So we had some purposeful spend downs to bring those fund balances down. The blue is the education fund. You can see the orange is our O and M fund. And you can see in 2022, the orange was a little bigger. That was the year that we had some carryover in Fund 21. And the light purple on the bottom is the working cash fund, the district's savings account, so to speak. And you can see that that has also creeped up in value through the years. We ended 2024 at 65%, which is right at the top of the fund balance policy. And also, I wanted to talk a little bit about all funds expense to budget actual. So this was some feedback from the finance committee, was some of the conversation was, how do we do on our expense budget to actual? So we do budget with a conservative in revenue and liberal in expenses. So we know that we've got a little bit of room in that budget. So this is all funds. This is all funds, expense budget to actual. And the source is the state board budget that we submit, board-approved budget, and then our annual audit, which is also at the state board. So the data is pulled from the state board. And you can see the past years from 2016. In 2021 and 2022, 23, those numbers were a little bigger. Finance committee said tighten up that budget. And so in 2024, we did tighten up a little bit. But we also had COVID in there. We got some extra money in there. We had Will County, one year gave us one of four tax payments. The next year, we ended up with three. You'll see that a little more obvious in a slide in the future. So pretty consistently, we've come in under budget. The two years that we were on or over budget were less than 1% in 16 and 18. This chart shows our revenue expenditures and fund balance. And the spike in the middle is the 2016 issue of some bonds and the corresponding spend of those bonds. And so that's what happened in 2016. But what I wanted to point out on this chart is the blue dotted line. The blue dotted line is the 2024 fund balance where we ended 2024. So if you look at that dotted line from 2024 and you go backwards, you can see that in 2024, our fund balance is at a, it's at a high number compared to going back all the way to 2007, which also shows the fiscal responsibility of this board. And then I'm going to talk about the funds that were outside of the board policy and the changes from the tentative budget to the proposed. So our Fund 20 is less than 33% this year. The plan to bring that back to 33% to 65%, we do plan to have less external maintenance expenses next year as our maintenance people become familiarized with their job. We expect not to have to outsource as much of our maintenance expense because we're going to bring that in-house. We have talked about how we use the levy in Fund 20 and Fund 21 this fall. How we do the levy gives us our money, our revenue in each of those accounts, and then monitor our Fund 21 projects to make sure that we have at least 33% to 35% in Fund 20 and zero in Fund 21. So that's the plan, and that's one that's out of. Fund 50 is also less than 33%. We had added the three maintenance staff, so we had to add those to the expenses. We also put some working cash transfer in to help support that. And then we'll use the levy this fall to increase that number to 33. So within the next year, 26, 27 budget, we'll have both of those funds back above 33%. We do have a operational deficit in Fund 10 where we're actually spending more than we brought in. So I want to talk a little bit about that. In our education fund, we have about $20 million of expenses. And usually, we have between 3% and 5% come in under budget on an annual basis. So that's a range between $600,000 and a million. And currently, we're planning to spend 782 more than we bring in. So if we come in where we usually come in, we should be almost right on in that budget. The majority of our expenses in Fund 10 are salary benefits and contractual employees. Majority of our expenses are our people. I also want to say, because the money is in the budget, doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to spend it. The board is just granting us the authority to spend it. And then I also want to show the data of why I make that statement. When we look back all the way to 2016, you can see historically in the education fund, we've been between 3% and 5% under budget. And these are the years that you can see since I've been here. So you can see, '23, it was four. '22, it was 6.8. '21, it was eight. That's kind of when the finance committee said tighten that budget up a little bit, and we did. So that's the data that supports that rationale. And I also want to touch on the fund balance in the education fund, Fund 10. You can see the fund balance is at 65% after our last audit. The last audit that we have is 2024. And the goal is to be between 33% and 65% ending fund balance, which we are. And then the changes from the tentative to proposed. In Fund 10, we did have, the first one you saw, I had copy machines, tried to look at buying them rather than leasing. The buy to get rid of the finance charges didn't work, so the leases in the proposed. Now, we did reduce the liability insurance line item in the proposed and increased it also in Fund 80 because we increased it Fund 80 to lower. This was some of the feedback that we had from board members and the finance committee. So this is reflected in this slide. The revenues were updated. Some of those revenues information, for example, Title II, we didn't have until after proposed budget was approved by the board. And so some of the grants we received after that, and so those numbers were updated in the proposed. And then in Fund 30, the bond and interest fund, we had some expenses in there from last year when we issued working cash bonds that I cleaned up. And then in Fund 40, I did add some extra revenue or extra expense for drivers as we were going to hire more drivers. And then the bus driver insurance also for the additional drivers. So there were some changes there. And in Fund 80, the addition of the $25,000 liability insurance expense to bring the fund balance down. And in Fund 70, the working cash, so this is something that the board, we talked about in the finance committee, and it was in the tentative to proposed. So using the working cash fund, which has a significant balance, to transfer the working cash interest to Fund 10 and the abatement of working cash of 350, 110 to the Ed Fund, 100 to Fund 21 O and M, 90 to Fund 20, and 50 to help support IMRAP, to support those funds that were underneath the fund balance policy. So how that works is we have it in the budget. In October, you'll see resolutions as an information item, and then November as an action memo. It still leaves 3.3 fund balance in the working cash. Some of the feedback from the finance committee was taking a look at how we can use the working cash fund interest for specific projects in the future, like, for example, the fourth-year purchase of the kindergarten Chromebooks. That would be an example. Or if we have a curriculum that we need to do a three-year buy on, that would be an example. So I also wanted to point out in the actual ISBE form, I try really hard not from Friday to Wednesday to make any changes from what's presented on Friday to Wednesday. But I did want to point out, based on some of the feedback that I got from the board members on a specific line item in this budget, the question was about it being in yellow. So yellow is the ISBE formulas. Gray is something that you just, it's just a dead cell. They don't allow that to happen. And white is where our data gets entered. So in the ISBE form that you received on Friday, on page two, there was a line item, number 30. It's blank right now. It says 7140, transfer of interest. Well, that's where I put the transfer of the working cash interest. And it needed to be in line item 7120, transfer of working cash interest. So I moved it from line 7140 to 7120, which allowed that number to flow into the ISBE page three. Somebody asked me, shouldn't that be there? And it should have. And it should have. So it flowed into the appropriate line item on page three. And then at the bottom of that line, 78, I removed where I put it in manually because I couldn't put it in the yellow one because it's an ISB protected cell because it was a formula. So it didn't change any of the bottom line numbers at all. I moved one working from transfer of interest to transfer working cash interest. So that's the single change that was made from the Friday ISB budget to tonight's budget. So I do appreciate you looking at what I send to you and asking those clarifying questions because doing what we're doing with working cash is new. And I went back and did a little look and research on it and said, oh, it should be the transfer of working cash interest, not transfer of interest. So I did want to point that out. I try not to make those changes from Friday to Wednesday, but that one was a was a change. So I want to give everybody a fresh copy of this. It's different than the one that's in Board Book. You're welcome. And then how are we doing? So again, our budget's conservative and revenue and liberal in expenses. Our fund balance per board policy is to be between 33 and 65%. And our our budget's at 46% estimated ending fund balance, which is right in our board policy. And then we will have our audit results, which is what we actually did in 25 next month. You're welcome. And it not.
Board member comments. Go ahead.
Okay. So Dr. Shaw, I'm sorry, I was slow to the draw here, trying to find, try to keep up with what you were pointing out. So was this, this, what page did you say that change happened on?
Page two.
Okay, and. Okay, so line 28.
Yes.
Okay, and that was where before?
Line 30.
Oh, okay. Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, okay, so a couple quick things. I gotta, I got, I have. Okay, so I just jotted down some notes real quick. I wanted to let you know that I, you know, I have seen, and I've tried to express this in the past. I've seen the changes in what the administration is putting for towards the to the board on some of this financial data and how, you know, you guys are really trying to address concerns and feedback that has been given, whether it be answering multiple rounds of questions or, you know, incorporating these new slides where you're detailing what changes happen from one version to another, that's something I've always struggled with. So I I recognize that you guys are making changes to be able to to, you know, satisfy the board on that, and I appreciate it. The, you know, the other thing, I don't know if I said this just now, is you're providing the drafts earlier to us, so we have more time. So that's really great. I think it's excellent that the this district has been so, you know, focused on on maintaining the lower tax rate for our community. I think it's really important to our community and people appreciate that. We've done a great job in the past of doing that. And I really value that kind of guide that we have had consistently through the years. What I worry about is I have, over the course of many months, expressed many concerns that I've had on our financial position, including an email I sent to the board. I mean, I've just, you know, I've sent multiple emails. I've sent, you know, had multiple phone calls. So I want to briefly go over some outstanding, well, not outstanding things, but I guess as I sit here today, I have some concerns. And I have detailed them in a document that I would like to submit via email right now and have it be retained as part of the budget hearing that we're in right now and public record that this is me as a board member providing written comments to the budget hearing that we're in. The email and the writing, the written document here goes into detail on my concerns and kind of gives some background that I believe I've communicated over the course of, you know, many months. And and with Mr. Gurney recently kind of passed on some kind of background information and rationale where I'm coming from. So I'm confident everybody has heard this before. I'm not going to get into those details now, but I do want it to become public record for the hearing so that anybody who wants to read this can see that background and rationale. I will just briefly highlight kind of the topics. And one is this operating deficit and how, you know, looking at it compared to deficits of the past is not comparing apples to apples because deficits of the past have frequently or more than once entailed payments or timing differences between one fiscal year to the other that have caused what people have referred to as like not true operational deficits. Whereas what we're looking at right now, I believe, is a true operational deficit. It is not an issue of timing or a large expense that has carried from one fiscal year to the next. So that's a major concern. And then healthcare is 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 a big one. I go into a lot of detail on all of the concerns that I have with healthcare costs. These, these concerns have existed for almost the entire time I've been on the board. I've communicated to them, you know, I've communicated them. I've asked questions. None of this is any surprise. It's pretty consistent, so I don't think it's going to be new information. The problem with healthcare, though, is, and what's different, is that we have, in the past year, approved two new collective bargaining contracts that include salary and wage increases 5% and more. And, and we have experienced healthcare costs rising last year at 10% and this year at 15%. So when you add those things together, the effect, you can see how it's not just we purchased buses this year. This is, this is the trajectory that we're on. And when you lay those salary and we salary wages and benefits expenses that are that are compiling, you lay that next to a decreasing CPI that's affecting the amount, that's capping the amount that we're able to levy, which is our revenue. So our expenses are growing at double the rate that we're able to levy in in revenue. And so that is a unsustainable position. And that is different from buying buses or stone quarry strikes of the of the past. So I'll just kind of scroll through. Another part that I put in here was about financial controls. I still, I've, people have heard me speak to this. I have strong concerns for the financial controls that are in place right now to protect us against over budgeted expenditures and waste. And I've suggested that we include a financial control audit as part of the annual audit process. I still think that that's needed. I think it would help Superintendent Gurney and his, in his, you know, review this coming year of what, how Moquina works and what our processes are. And I think there's opportunity for us to strengthen the finance committee's role. So we've talked about what we could and should be doing in the board finance committee. And, you know, it just seems like we're moving further away from collaborative, you know, productive discussions in that meeting. I'm sorry that I was unable to attend the meeting last week. I was out of town, but I I've heard that that meeting was was different. So I I hope we've kind of turned the corner. But I think that there's opportunity for us to do more within that committee to address the operational deficit and you know, add value there and and talk about, you know, cost reduction. Really, at this point, I think we need to be speaking about ways we can reduce our costs and be more conservative with spending. It's just unsustainable. I've spoken with Superintendent Gurney about these issues, and I was just really pleasantly, oh, I was, we had a pleasant conversation yesterday. And I'm just very happy and I have full faith in in our superintendent that he will make changes to our spending so that we are, you know, protecting the district from from potential changes that aren't so easy in the future. And I look forward to, we started brainstorming yesterday about some things that we can do to to cut costs. And I just, I really look forward to having more of those conversations. In the meantime, I want to make sure that I just want, I hope everybody can respect that I will not support approving expenditures, including those on the docket tonight, that continue to increase our operational deficit. I think it's a high priority this board need to to put forth the effort and the investment in time to have discussions on how to cut costs. I've been doing this for a long time. My view right now, based on the information I have, is that this isn't going to be like this. This isn't going to be over a long period of time and a slow decline. I think it's going to be like this because these are just, I can't think of the the word. I don't know why my mind is going blank, but compounding, the the issues are compounding, right? So wages increase 5%. Then next year, they increase 5% on top of the new one. And then the next year, and same with healthcare, healthcare increased 10%. Now that's your new number. Then it increases 25% of that number. Then it like, it's just unsustainable. Meanwhile, our revenues are, our revenue cap is going to go down. So anyway, I'm going to send this email to the board and to Kelly Lynn and Superintendent Gurney right now. I I ask that everybody review it and it become part of public record. Thank you.
Fellow board members, would anyone else like to comment? Looking to my left and going around, Eric, you got something?
Yeah.
Go for it.
I'd like to make a few comments if I could.
Go right ahead.
So Dr. Shaw, thank you for trying to explain the 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 budget. You know, I think a lot of people see numbers and they get sticker shock. And they don't really realize, you know, you've got to peel back the onion sometimes on that. So when you see $1.3 million, people start, you know, falling off their chair like, oh, my gosh, what's going on? What's happening? I think you did a good job, but if I can just put some numbers next to some of those bullet points that you had and just highlight some of the things that we've done in this district that, you know, to show people that this is not wasteful spending. A lot of these expenses go directly into the classroom and affect students, which is what we're here for. So if we can, if I can just do that, I'd appreciate that time, Jim, if I could. So we talked about timing. There is timing in this deficit, 100%. O and M, $225,000. We've talked about numerous meetings, finance committee, this committee. We're a cash basis versus accrual basis. We did not spend all of our projects. So what that means is, in the fiscal year, if we don't have that project complete by June 30, that money carries over. We can't prepay it. A business like myself would accrue it and expense it in the right year. This is a carryover. So at $225,000 in O and M is not a true deficit. That is timing. Just clear the air right there. That's timing. Next thing, let's go to the education fund. And if, who's doing the slides? Terry, sorry, sorry, I put you on the spot a little bit. Can you go back to? Yes, I know. You're trying to get some water, and I put him on the spot. I apologize. Can you go back to the proposed budget summary that has the the numbers by fund?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, please drink. All right, can we go one above this? Sorry, one, one. Okay, so so let's talk about this one a little bit. So we have a Chromebook refresh in there. That expense directly impacts our students. And that expense, I have it right here, that expense is $110,000. So if we want to sit there and say to our students, no, you have to put up with the Chromebooks you have and not get a refresh or not get new ones to the new students, we could do that. That's going to cost 100, that costs us $110,000 to get our students' refreshed Chromebooks. That expense directly in the classroom that benefits our students and the education experience. So what did we do? Dr. Shaw got creative. That $110,000 is being transferred out of our working cash fund into the ed fund to pay for that. Now, something that through the whole conversation of our working cash fund that came up, I thought was kind of interesting. That balanced a $3.4 million in a working cash fund. When Dr. Shaw started at our district eight years ago, you said it was 1.23? 1.2, it's got 1.2-ish, somewhere in there, one, somewhere in the 1, 1 million range. That has tripled in 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 value since she's been, we have not done anything with that. So one of the things that we came out of, finance committee with, is the that kind of one, the mandates or that we gave Dr. Shaw, Gurney, was, hey, when we have these operational expenses, but they are cyclical in nature, once every three years, once every four years, let's list, get a map of all of those expenses, and then we can strategize on ways to use this interest. Because if you go, sorry, can you go back to the? So if you look at that slide, working cash fund there, the revenue, $282,000, that's interest on our money. Plus levy. So what are we going to do with that money? We've not historically done anything with it. So, sorry, I'm making the wrong, can you go back to the other one? So what do we do? What else did we do that directly affects curriculum, textbook, workbooks? That is $150,000 that we have spent. We could tell Dr. Johnson and our teachers and our staff, no, you're not getting a refresh on your curriculum. You got to deal with what you got. We didn't do that. We're taking money out of the working cash fund and we're telling, please, put that to use in the the working cash fund and we're telling, please, put that to use in the classroom. So those two expenses there, 110 for that, 150. That's another $250,000 of, if you want to call it deficit. We could say no to that, but that directly impacts our students. So when you talk about fiscally responsible and what's best for the students, there's not a lot of fat in this budget to where where are you going to cut? The next thing, we talked a lot about benefits. Benefits in this budget, if you go by function code 2220, $2.9 million this year. That's a $500,000 increase from last fiscal year. Seven years ago, it was $1.5 million that we paid for benefits. So we just signed, we just signed two union contracts for both MTA, MCSA. All seven of us approved it up here. Seven oh vote. In that thing, we say that we're going to pay benefits for our staff. So we have to honor that commitment. So if people don't want, if they want to cut this deficit, whose benefits do you want to cut? Is my question to them. We are obligated, we signed a contract. We need to honor that commitment. That's to the tune of $500,000 of that deficit. So do we need to brainstorm next year and try to figure out ways? Yes, but for this year, not a lot we can do. So you think about that $500,000 for the benefits. You talk about $250,000 for Chromebooks and the curriculum. Then another $225,000 for the O and R referendum. That's a million dollars. Look at that number, 1.3. Now, I didn't get to 1.3, so there is a structural deficit that we have to address. But I hopefully the community will understand that this isn't $1.3 million of fluff that we can cut. I would question, if someone wants to come up, we are, I would open ears. What do you want to cut out of a budget? That doesn't impact our students and doesn't impact our our labor contracts that we have signed? Two of them, for MCSA, MTA. So do we have some work to sharpen some pencils for for some, maybe FY '27 budget? 100%. But for this budget, there's not a lot of fat in this budget that can be cut. So does anybody on this, around this table like that number? No. But we're contractually obligated to meet those numbers. And I am going to meet those obligations that we committed to make. Thank you.
I love it. I have one thing to add. One of the programs we used to do years ago, when we needed things like Chromebooks, they were financed. And then we're using taxpayer money and interest. We stopped doing that approximately well over three years ago. So we want the taxpayer money staying in the classroom, helping the kids. It's not going to interest payments on their new devices that they need. We're buying them because we are trying to responsibly use their funds and their trust. Eric touched on a lot of good points. Also, yes, there's contracts. Yes, there's benefits on there. We also have people that retire over years. We also have new people coming in. So when you look at numbers, that's not truly how it ultimately goes because there is a bit of a fluctuation and there is an offset when we've got an amazing person that gave their life and blood to this district for a long time. And then we have a brand new person. There is a differential on that. And that's part of the equation. And in all fairness to the people sitting around this table that have been working on those contracts and this budget, takes a long time to do it. It's never perfect. It is a best guess on a good day. But it's the best guess we got. And I think it's a good one to get rolling with. And that's my two cents.
First, Dr. Shaw, thank you for addressing all the questions and Mr. Gurney. Before I make my comments, I always like to ask Mr. Gurney or Dr. Shaw if you have anything you wanted to add after hearing some of the comments. That's, you know, it's, it's hard to present something and then not feel like you can give a response. So at any point, I I am happy with if you feel like you would like to to respond. One of the things that I would like to better understand is I have no problem with written testimony. But would that be as an individual, Kelly, or as a board member? And and if it's a board member, again, fine. But it doesn't have all of the context of the the time and and effort of a risk of a a response. So I would ask Mr. Gurney if if you could speak with our attorney, Mr. Fester. And just with with some sort of caveat that this is a sole board member's opinion and a lack of a response does not mean that we all agree. Again, I am fine with Kelly or sharing her opinion. I I just want to make sure that if it becomes part of the record, that there's, it is properly addressed since it, there's no full record of all of the effort that went into addressing the the questions. And there may be, you know, something that Dr. Shaw or Mr. Gurney doesn't agree with. You know, I, I, I take a lot of from those additional slides that that you worked on that show that over time, the numbers do come in lower. You know, you're in the trenches every day. I think that we have to give you credit for for that. I believe that this, you know, this is tentative. This will be amended. This is our best guess. You have taken into consideration things from every board member. You've modified where necessary and and disagreed with others. I mean, you, I mean, I've made suggestions that didn't get into a revision, but there was a rationale for it and I understood it. So I I just want people to to walk away knowing, not looking at just a number and focusing on that number because so much more went into it. And and, you know, I I could go into more detail, but I, but I think everyone gets gets that point and you made it very clear. So I appreciate the efforts.
I'd like to just follow up on a couple of things.
Yes, Kelly, what would you like to add?
Okay, so my comments on public record are not meant, I mean, it is what it is, right? So it's not for somebody to either agree with or not agree with because I'm representing myself and these are my views, solely my views. I think everybody understands that. So it's my understanding also that I cannot submit written testimony or comments as a member of the public on this hearing, which is why I have to do so as a member of the board. I welcome responses. So if you dispute or you want to discuss further anything that I have in my email, please respond and make that a part of public record too, or invite the public to obtain a copy of the emails. Either way, my intention is that the public is able to access my comments, my concerns, and I I have full faith that they'll be able to do that. And I just want to make another quick point is we buy Chromebooks every year, right? And so like, and also what we do every year is we rationalize why deficits are okay. And we try to get the public to to not be scared or, you know, kind of minimize the gravity maybe or or the implications of of a deficit. Many members of this board have talked in the past. You can look back at videos of how the really important thing is like, is it an operational deficit? And in the past, it wasn't. But now it is. And now we're talking about something different. So, you know, we're moving, we're moving the the carrot here. But the reality is, this is not a Chromebook problem. This is not a Fund 21 project problem. This is an operational deficit and it's because of salaries and benefits. And if we don't decide and make hard, excuse me? Can I, there usually we don't talk while somebody else is talking. But if we don't make hard decisions and hard conversations, have hard conversations about reducing our spending somehow, then it will result in us having to do something less favorable to our taxpayers or our student community or our employees down the line. It is inevitable. You cannot have the same money coming in or less money coming in and expenses rising exponentially more. You cannot. This is salaries. This is benefits. That's what this is. And it's an operational deficit. And I implore and I look forward to board members responding publicly or otherwise to what I've said.
Board, I've taken 30 seconds and read it. There is hearsay in there. There are accusations in there. This is a five page document that was not shared with the board previously. I do not believe it is appropriate to include it in the information. And I've only glanced at it. This is nothing that's been done before. It is inappropriate and it would require legal counsel if it could even be included. I am disappointed in the actions that I am seeing. I am unfortunately surprised by what I am seeing. And no, I I do not believe this should be added at all. So I'd know it will not be added unless we absolutely need to. That being said, I move the Board of Education to close the 2025-2026 budget hearing. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Julie. Roll call vote. Kelly, can you help me, please?
Mrs. Briscoe? Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ofs? Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski? Mr. Andreessen?
Yes. Okay. Public communication. Mike Romano, I believe you have some nice information to share with us regarding 843. Nice to see you tonight. Thank you for coming.
All right, so those that don't know me, again, my name is Mike Romano. I'm an administrator for Linkway Special Ed 843. For, again, I have two programs here that I want to speak about a little bit. We have our SELF program and our Stellar program here, which are two programs that are housed in Mokina. Our SELF program is our social emotional learning foundations program. This is a K through eight program. It's helping with our students who exhibit social emotional behavioral characteristics that impede their ability to participate in the general education classroom. A little over a year ago, a year and a half ago, we started our Stellar program, which is our structured teaching and learning room. Again, it's another self-contained program that's designed to support students more with their communication, social skills, sensory needs, positive supports, positive behaviors in a smaller setting. So again, those are two programs that have been housed here. The SELF program has been housed here for a number of years and then we started the Stellar program. We're currently at 32 students. We have 12 Stellar and 20 SELF students. 21 of those are between MES and MIS. And then we have 11 at the junior high. It's a total of six classrooms. We are currently serving students from all four of our member districts. So Manhattan, Mokina, Summit Hill, Frankfurt. And then we also service a few kids that are outside of our member districts. So we have a handful of Homer 33C students, a few Lockport 91 students, and then a few Orland 135 students. So as our space allows or as our capacity allows, we do open up to our non-member districts. And again, that's a benefit both to us and our member districts as well. In terms of like, if you're not sure of how our programs work, we do have a full support system with our programs. So we are fortunate enough to have two social workers for our programs. One that is primarily just for the junior high. And then another one that is just for the elementary school. We have a full-time speech path, part-time OT, and then a full-time BCBA along with classroom aides. Wow, that timer really goes fast when it's right there in front of you. Holy cow. It's the quickest three minutes of my life. Streamlining everything. Again, our main goal is to focus on academics for our students. Again, I'm very thankful that we have the relationship with Mokina where we can use the same curriculum. And as we start to push kids into into those Gen Ed settings that we can support them and use that same curriculum. So out of, just to kind of give you a little bit of history, when I started here in 2022, we had 21 students in our program and only five students were participating in a single Gen Ed setting. So no matter what, our kids participate and specials, lunch, recess. And then as we start to streamline them and get them heading in the, back into those Gen Ed classes with ultimately going back into their homeschool, we only had five students and one academic class and only one student that was participating and two or more. Sorry, you guys okay if I keep going? All right. As of August of 2025, we, with our 32 students, will have 11 of them participating in a single Gen Ed class and eight of them participating in two or more. So that is a huge jump from 2022 to 2025. Out of, from 2022 till last year, we've had 12 students either transitioned back to their homeschool or if they're an eighth grader, transitioned to a less restrictive environment. And then we've only had to go more restrictive, a more restrictive placement with four students. So again, huge numbers when you look at how we've been doing. We're averaging, like I said, about four students every year going back to their home district. Some key things that I think have really helped us kind of grow and kind of develop. In 2023, so my second year here, we decided that we needed our own mascot and kind of our own identity. So we really appreciate everything being a part of Mokina. But again, just kind of having our own identity or giving our kids a little self identity. We became the Self Cyclones or Self Stellar Cyclones. And then we kind of focus all of our themes that go along with that. So we've had, some of the themes that we've had over the years are our students that are added advantage because we are there to support them. And we talked a lot with our staff again about how we have so many supports available to our students. And our students are so fortunate to have all of these things to help them succeed and help them grow. We over me succeed through CTE where we talk about collective teacher efficacy and how that benefits our students. And then this year, our theme that go really along with our mascot is a force of one. So we talk about like how we as an individual can help with our students, how as us as a program can help. And then, of course, like how as a community, we can all work together as one force. We try and involve our families in a lot of things. So again, we participate with Mokina in a lot of those things, but we also do our own family events as well. So we do things like donuts with dudes, muffins with moms, breakfast with Santa, which is usually a big hit. Breakfast with the Easter Bunny, family game night, family movie night. Trying to pick something almost monthly to incorporate with our families and get them invested. I I love doing that too because once they're here and they're invested in our program, they typically then venture out to the Mokina stuff as well. So they not only get to become a part of their own school district or their homeschool district, but also that Mokina school district as well. Some of the biggest changes that we've had for this school year is we've extended our Stellar program from kindergarten to second to kindergarten through fifth. So we did a little bit restructuring of our classrooms. We went from having here, having three SELF classrooms and one Stellar classroom to two and two. So we have one Stellar classroom that is kindergarten through second and then one Stellar classroom that is third through fifth. Same thing with our SELF. We went one classroom kindergarten through third and, or kindergarten through second and then third through fifth. So just allowing us to, again, meet the needs of more of our students and giving them what we need. And then if any of you have been down where our classes are by the art room, we changed up our sensory space. I am forever grateful for everyone here to allow us to change that space. We used to have our sensory area in a single classroom, which only allowed us to have really like one or two students using that space at a time. But by moving it into that common area where before and after school it used to be, we have now, it's now allowed us to have multiple students out there and really benefiting those sensory needs that they have. So that's been a huge, huge win for us this year. So I just want to also say a special thanks to all of our extended SELF and Stellar family, which would include all of our Gen Ed, Mokina teachers. Our success, we wouldn't have the success we had without them. You know, like they, they're always willing to take our students and support our students in those Gen Ed settings. And again, they they really work well with us and making sure that our students can be successful. Again, we wouldn't be able to move 12 kids into a less restrictive environment without having the support of that, those Mokina teachers. Our building administrators, Kristin has been a ginormous help, especially with our curriculum stuff. has been a ginormous help, especially with our curriculum stuff. I remember my first year here and I was like, she's like, all right, we've got curriculum stuff. And I'm like, great, what do we have? And she's like, well, why don't you go down there and look what you have? And I went down there. I'm like, there's nothing. She's like, okay, so here we go. And now we've gotten a good rhythm of cycling through the curriculum, just like you guys do. And so she's been a huge help to that. Like I said, our building administrators between scheduling, between when we start to transition kids into Gen Ed settings, all of those things, like they're all pivotal in that. And then Megan has always been willing to help with everything SPED related. I joke around that I was in the SPED world and then I stepped out of the SPED world and now I'm back in it. And there's still things that I know I do wrong. And so I know that I can turn to Megan and be like, hey, how do I do this again? So again, just having that support from her and then she's always willing to help support our kids regardless if they're a Mokina student or not. So again, thank you all to those Mokina people that helped make our program a success. And again, I'm really looking forward to another successful year.
Mike, thanks for coming tonight and the update.
Any questions about our programs or anything like that?
I'm glad you got good people surrounding you and you're making it better for the kids.
We're trying, we're trying. So, all right. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
District bills. I looked through the bills. It was as exciting as you can imagine it was. Terri Shaw was kind and spent some time with me yesterday going through a few questions that I had, and she was very kind with her time. And that was great. That being said, I have asked and answered my questions. Thank you for your help. I move to approve the monthly bills as presented. Kelly Lynn?
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Okay, personnel, who's up?
I'll take it. I move to approve Personnel Recommendations 6C 1 through 7 as presented, subject to successful background check and verification of credentials if applicable.
Lisa? Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Okay. So for the community that might not have the details of personnel report in front of them right now, just want to highlight the fact that from a transportation perspective, on the docket is one resignation and the hiring of six new bus drivers, so a net five. So I know there's been a lot of talk and there's been a lot of pain that parents have endured due to our shortage of bus drivers. That is not unique to Mokina, but I'd like to thank our administration for moving quickly on this and proposing things. And we got six people as a result of those efforts. Dr. Shaw has confirmed that all six of those individuals have confirmed that they signed up because of, you know, the initiatives that were put forward and approved at last board meeting. So for the families out there that have experienced difficulties and struggles with transportation, with buses being canceled, we are working diligently and we, help is on the way. Thank you.
And to back that up, because I love it. I knew it was something we had, we had a challenge. We knew we had to get it, but we're also taking a measured approach. So as we have people and they can drive, we are adding the routes back in a responsible way when we have the people versus if all of a sudden someone is sick, all of a sudden we have a problem. We're being responsible about adding the routes back as we're able to. So yes, love it. Thank you.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yeah.
I had something. Kelly, is it okay? I just wanted to point out the administrator stipend. Dr. Johnson, I want to say thank you for the, all the efforts that you have put forth for really ramping up something the community has wanted for a long time. They've, they've asked for and you've come through. I know it's a team effort, but I just wanted to say thank you for all those efforts and really ramping it, ramping that up.
Okay, so I would like to remove number seven from the personnel report so that we can separate this report into two separate actions, one through six, and then separate from that, number seven on the report.
You are welcome to make a motion or an amended motion. Someone would like to second it, then we can entertain that idea.
Okay, I make a motion to amend the motion so that we are taking action on the personnel recommendations as presented, items one through six only.
With a second vote for number seven?
With a second vote for number seven.
Okay. Kelly has made a motion. Is there someone that would like to second that motion? Okay, Julie would like to second it. Okay.
There's also a standing motion. I have the first and a second on the floor that needs to be removed.
Okay.
We have two, we have two motions right now. Because that motion's been approved and the second is the initial one for all of it in one vote.
So I make a motion to approve the first motion and replace it with the second motion. Amend. Amended. Sorry, amend it with the second motion.
Right. You've done that. It's been seconded by Julie, but it's already been initial, no, no, initial amendment needs to be removed or withdrawn because that has a first and a second.
I thought that's only a free vote to amend the motion.
Oh, okay, whatever.
At this point, I believe, yeah, this thing's on. I believe we would have to vote on if we would like to have the amended motion, and then you have to actually vote on it. I believe it is that two-part. It sounds kind of funny, but that's the way I thought it was. But you're right, there is the original, and then they made a motion to amend it. There was a second. So as of right now, in my opinion, it's a question of, are we going to approve the, the idea of the amended motion, and then actually vote on it? Okay. That being said, Kelly Lynn, because I'm not trying to get confusing at all, we are not voting to approve one through six and seven separately from a taking action perspective. We are entertaining the question of voting on those two items separately. And that's all. That's all we're doing, is entertaining the idea of separating the motions. That being said, any questions at the moment about that idea? Okay, we are only voting on the amendment. Kelly Lynn, can you help us out?
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Okay, that being said, there is an official motion on the floor, ladies and gentlemen. We are going to vote on one through six first and then take seven separately. That's what we're doing. So let's take a vote on items one through six. Kelly Lynn, can you help us with that, please?
Okay. Does someone need to make a motion to vote on?
We already did. That's why it's amended.
It's amended as two separate things though.
Trying to be very clear about all this.
Mrs. McMillan?
Go ahead.
Yes. Okay. Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Okay, that being said, item seven was put off for a second, and now that's up for vote. And Kelly Lynn, can you help us with the vote for number seven, please?
Excuse me. Can we, can we open this up for comment real quick?
I kind of thought that's what we did when we put it up as a first and second to begin with, and no one commented. However, if you would like to comment before voting on seven, that's okay.
Right. I just want to go on record to say this is just consistent with what I had, had put in writing to the board and, and I believe verbalized today during our, during our budget hearing was that, you know, I, I just, I have to draw a line that I am not going to be in favor of increasing our deficit for expenses until we have constructive conversations about how to decrease them. And what's on the table here is an additional administrative, administrator stipend, which is, you know, not classroom student focused. I will say that I appreciate the efforts that have been made in communicating with our, our community. I welcome it. I think we're doing a wonderful job, and it's been progressively improving over the course of the past two years. At the end of the day, I think unfortunately, we just cannot afford to allocate more money towards administrator compensation at this point and potentially suggest that we reevaluate how we might, you know, reallocate or redelegate the duties of this position to multiple people so it's not falling on one person. And we're able to just kind of spread it out and, and not just add it on to one person's pay, which hopefully will alleviate some of that pressure. But that would be my preference, and that is the reason that I separated this out.
Mr. Andreessen?
Oh, go ahead, Sam.
I think a fair amount of people are going to want to chime in, but Sam got my.
That's fine.
Then you're going next.
Please.
Totally fine.
Totally. Would have let Julie go first. But I would just like to comment that we are getting a significantly better job done on our social medias right now, thanks to Dr. Johnson graciously taking it over at a bargain price of a small percentage of what we were paying others to do this in the future. So by hiring another person or adding duties to another employee, we still would be looking at some dollars spent on this. But again, Dr. Johnson, Johnson's graciousness has given us a way to do it less expensively and still significantly better.
Okay. Lisa, you have anything to share? Anna, Eric? Okay, I'll go. We had a, we had a person doing this physician, and it was okay. Kristin's doing a much better job. I think our families will see the impact in their classrooms with the teachers and the pictures and the nice stories that are being shared. Part of our strategic plan is communication. It's one of the most important things we do to share all the things we're doing in our district with our families. Kristin saw a need. She stepped up. She's been doing a nice job, and it is less expensive than what we used to pay in the past, and we are getting a much better quality. That being said, I make the motion to approve Kristin Johnson for item number seven.
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
No.
Moving on to consent agenda. Would someone like to help me with that?
Sure. I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 6D 1 through 2 as presented.
Okay, Julie first and a second. Questions, concerns? Hearing none. Let's go.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2025-2026 budget as presented, seconded by Sam. Questions, concerns? I'd like to thank everybody that put a lot of time and effort into doing this. It's one of the more important things that we deal with, and we are trying to use taxpayer money wisely. That's who's funding a large majority of this. And I think it goes to showing our teachers and the people on this table that are helping to provide a quality education to our families. And I'm glad we can do that. That being said, I'd like to call the vote.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
No.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Would someone like to read 6F?
Sure. I move to approve entering into a contract with Double G Excavating Inc. of Mantino, Illinois in an amount not to exceed $104,752 to finish the MES MIS Willowcrest project as presented.
Man, we've got a lane speed record on it. Give it to Anna. Questions, concerns? Hearing none. Let's go.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Internal fiber cable replacement.
I move to approve the replacement of fiber cables running between the solar loop for a total project cost of $7,000, $200,000 in urban cost and [inaudible].
Second.
Seconded by Julie. Questions, concerns? Hearing none. Let's go.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Okay.
Going through information reports. Sam, would you like to talk about the Finance Committee? It was a really good committee.
It really was.
I think you did a nice job running it.
It really was. I have to completely reiterate what Dr. Shaw said. It was, might even go so far as to say the best meeting I've ever been a part of. But I said maybe, I said maybe. But it was, it was extremely cohesive. I feel like everybody had some really good ideas and came away with a lot of, a lot of really good things happening. So unless I am missing anything, the only other update is next one, November 10th for current year levy, right?
Yes. Current year levy and our summer projects debrief.
Hmm, and summer projects, yep.
And you always put a lot of nice pictures together with the summer project so we can communicate what we've been doing with, with all of that for the district. Thank you. Questions for Sam?
Just a comment?
Yes.
Just thank you for allowing the non-committee members to ask questions. I think it, it gave, at least I'll speak for myself, it gave me more time to think about the questions that I did have about the budget, and it gave me that time to be comfortable with it. So I appreciate that.
Comfortable is a good word on that. It was a very cohesive meeting. People were comfortable being vulnerable, saying, you know, trying to understand new things. It was nice. So well, well run. Yes.
Are you, okay. Just a quick question. I thought that the parent that was serving on that committee said at some point that he wasn't gonna continue. So I'm curious what the process is to find another parent in the district that has that finance background to, to open the door up for somebody else to join that committee. Has that been discussed?
It has been started to be discussed. It is not completely finalized yet. Eric and I have been too busy to really truly have enough of a discussion to really make a plan yet. But it is started discussions, I guess is the best way to summarize it.
So, so this is a board committee, right? So I think it's important that what is being discussed, maybe you share with the board members and allow us to provide feedback on what you would propose, that process look like. I think that would be great. And, and also just a point is, I, you know, in light of not being able to attend, I really appreciated those minutes that Mr. Gurney sent out, really timely, right after, I think it was the day after the meeting. That's been a struggle that I've had in the past with that committee too. So it, it helped me catch up and get, you know, obviously I got an idea of what was discussed and read them. And so I just would ask, can we incorporate those into as, as the report for the board meeting then, following the Finance Committee meeting in board book, so that we can easily go back to reference? go back to reference? Because you're not providing a report right now for our agenda. So maybe that could be the report that we provide for this meeting is what I'm suggesting.
My experience is that we first bring it back to the committee to review the notes and then approve the notes. We had brought a draft to the board because people weren't able to be there.
Oh, I see. Okay. So so that will become a part of board book. Oh.
After the assignments.
On the finance.
Yeah.
Got it. Sorry, I, so it won't be, it won't, you won't, we won't have a report here or will we maybe something like a recommendations or something that comes out of that meeting that will be become a part of this meeting's agenda? Maybe, maybe not. Okay.
I mean, I guess I can't really say yes or no for sure. We'd have to brainstorm what with not having another finance committee before this one to approve those things, I'm not sure what, other than telling you what happened, what report, but stuff we can brainstorm for sure.
Julie, do you have anything you'd like to share tonight?
I shared a memo about moving forward with the policy committee. Last month, folks asked for consideration for a move forward with the calendar. So what I did was put out a memo with a couple options and I'm happy to take questions on that memo if anyone has them or I can review it if you prefer. Okay. If we can share, you know, with myself or Mr. Gurney, which option we'd like. The the goal of the committee is to develop a cadence of review for all of our policies that should happen per I A S B. They give you kind of a couple options to follow. And we generally just follow what the press updates are very far and few between. We we don't accept something if it's just not pertinent. But if you could give your opinion, if you would like it to be a committee similar to the, you know, meeting when the finance committee meets or if myself and Mr. Gurney meet and then we we put forth a report, there would be time for discussion, no matter which option is is chosen. There would be no changes done without the full board knowing. But we do need to develop a cadence for review so we know that our policies are working and we have the evidence to to support that or address any issues that may need to be updated. So if you could share that with myself or Mr. Gurney, that would be fantastic. The only other thing is we did have an action item for the latest press, but there were a couple members that asked if it could just remain as an information item because we're, we're just a little bit unclear how we're going to work through the process of implementation of the changes. And what I suggest, and in obviously, Mr. Gurney, this is more in your, in your camp once things get finalized, is that folks look at the red lines that are contained in I A S B, the the press online. If you would like to have Kelly Lynn make those part of a pack, the packet, we can do that as well. But I understand that there was some confusion about what the expectations were. So if you have questions on that, I'm sure one of us can help address those.
Just for clarification, no one had asked for it to be switched to informational.
Oh.
We felt like since I wasn't able to connect with those people in a timely manner by Monday afternoon, we wanted to allow it to be informational.
Gotcha.
And I did talk to Mr. Andreessen about this. We're gonna shift, I have not told the whole cabinet about this, but I have talked to Kelly Lynn. We're gonna shift the timeline for when we're providing the board a preview of the agenda, which is gonna be an entire week prior to the board meeting. And we're hoping that that extra time late Wednesday afternoon, when we send that out, will give people more time to get to that Monday at noon, kind of get all their questions in by then and kind of take the air out of the balloon a little bit. We're hoping a few extra days will provide people some more time to look at it.
In all fairness to Bob, when he brought that up as an idea, I didn't think I needed to consult anybody. If you wanted your packets a couple days early, I didn't think I'd hear any objections. So it was a good idea and I think it will help.
This is the best thing I've heard. I mean, this is amazing. I I really am very excited about this. I think this has always been a struggle and a pain point. There's just a rushed timeline and, you know, yeah, lots of questions. And thank you. Thank you for for suggesting that. Thank you for doing that and what all that it entails on on your end, making that happen. I appreciate it.
A lot of that is my team, who I did not consult very much, so I'm sorry about that. Be really honest about the whole thing.
Fair enough. We good on that? Good. Bob, you're up. I know you had a few things in the board book this month. Did you have anything else you'd like to add?
I I got a chance to drive in this morning to Bill Withers Lovely Day and I really enjoyed that drive, listening to Bill Withers Lovely Day. I was really excited about the board meeting. I get a chance every day to come to work with Kristen Johnson and Terry Shaw and Lincoln Henson and Megan Munt and a wonderful union with all their support and I'm very, very thankful. I was very thankful for the board supporting us last month when we said, please help us with these bus drivers and I'm really, really excited to be hiring six people this evening. I think it's a really wonderful piece. I also want to mention, you know, Terry's got some wonderful graphs up there. The financial stewards that are around this table, they're the former superintendents, Mr. Stein, Dr. Cohen, that have really made sure that we're in this good place, really need to be honored to. I appreciate the comments about me, but at the same time, a lot of people have been working on this for many, many years and I do appreciate that. I also got some feedback about the enrollment graphs. So we're gonna have more graphs and more detail about the enrollment at each grade level. So those are the the things I wanted to bring up, Mr. Andreessen.
Can I comment real fast to Mr. Gurney? I just wanted to, yeah, thank you for, you know, one of the questions I had, and I think you understand, if you look back at what has, I think historically been presented probably this month or, you know, give or take one month, is that detailed enrollment graph that I really like and I reference frequently. So I appreciate you, you know, following up on that. And, you know, with the different number of sections at Mokena Junior High, we've kind of honed in last year that, you know, applying a, you know, a seven denominator across the board at Mokena Junior High, or I guess K through, you know, eight is not really what what it looks like as far as classroom sizes. So, so, you know, over the course of the last two years, I've kind of honed in on asking the question based on, you know, how many classrooms are above 26 or 27 or 28? And that's really kind of the gauge that I like to look at. So thank you for for agreeing to provide that and and I will, I will look at it and I do reference it, so it's it's worth it. Thank you.
No, it's been a really great start to the school year. We've had a lot of great new implementations with our social studies curriculum, our ACL curriculum at the junior high, and then implementing our advanced learners program, getting that all off the ground to start this year. So I just want to say thank you to our teachers and our staff for putting all those things in action for our students. It's been a great start to the year. And if you didn't hear, our baseball team won regionals. I know I mentioned it to you guys right before a meeting, so that's super exciting for them. Luke isn't here, so I'll share the good news.
Megan, you started us off with some nice things to share tonight. It's good to take care of people. I like that. Do you have anything else you'd like to share tonight?
Somewhere in the mini, mini documents you have in front of you is a little sticker. That is our logo. Yep, that's it. For this school year, for the student services department, you'll note in my my update here, our theme is Together We Grow. We are focusing on professional development this year and ensuring that we have time to reflect, refine, and grow as a team. So that symbol of a tree and and hands around it is to help remind us of that. So the the little elephant is no longer our logo, so this is our new one. I may have stolen the the idea from Mike Romeo of a logo each year, so thanks for that. I love it too.
The elephant was cute, but this is really nice too.
Yeah.
It looks nice.
Yeah. A couple of things regarding professional development and then my usual student service shout out, but did want to draw your attention for the local educational agency determinations. This is a a great honor for ISBE to be designated as meets requirement, which is the highest requirement in regards to various indicators of success to assess how well our LEAs in our our district is implementing requirements under IDA. So exciting news there.
I love it. Thank you. That's great. Terry, you had a lot on your plate tonight. I can't think of anything else you'd like to share, but you may have one. One, maybe I need to get her a water first. You may have one or two things else you'd like to share. I know you've been working on a couple other projects and that kind of stuff.
Only two, three, three things.
Okay.
Try to keep it under a minute. I, when you mentioned the.
If she keeps going, we'll be poor.
Yeah.
She doesn't stop.
Great, great. You mentioned summer projects and you like the pictures.
Yes.
Kristen immediately leans over to me and says, ooh, a summer project social media campaign.
And in all fairness, that's part of the promise we made to the taxpayers as part of the referendum is to show them where the money's going, to show them the before and after pictures, and I think it makes a difference.
All the way down to the dollar. We do it every March.
I love it.
Yep, yep. Anyway. And also, I know everybody's kind of talked about transportation, so I just want to do a little bit of a shout out. I'd like to thank the the six board members who voted for that market adjustment. It really allowed us to go forward, open that door. We had over 100 applicants come because of that. We did whittle it down. We've got six on the agenda tonight. Two are fully licensed that we hope to have them driving in two weeks. Two others that had a CDL, got their P, CDLP, their permit, so we hope to have them driving in four and two others who need everything, which is about a six to eight week process. I'd also like to give a little shout out to Kim and HR and Irvin. They really interviewed a lot of people and sifted through a lot of data to get us to this point. And our bus drivers, Catherine, Jimmy, Nick, Fred, Nancy, Dave, those seven that hang in there. Irvin is also driving around, number eight. And our people who have stepped up to sit on some of those buses where that's a 71-passenger bus with 67 seats on there. Two are in the, Kelly Lynn has the last one that comes in and I do sit on the bus with the first one that comes in. But so I certainly appreciate that. Diana Lopez, our payroll person sits on a bus. Two of her daughters who are paraplegics, Lydia and Ani sit on the bus. Lisa Peters, Kristen's administrative assistant, is sat on the bus. We've got a couple teachers, Amanda Drager and Martha Caden, who've sat on the bus for us. So we really appreciate all that help on with our bus drivers to show them how much that we support them. And also I knew, do need to give a special shout out to the woman who puts her body in front of cars. Aaron Min is a fantastic crossing guard. Those buses wouldn't even be able to leave the parking lot without Aaron standing out there. So we really appreciate the efforts that Aaron does on our behalf. And then I just wanted to say that inside my board report, you probably saw our custodial report card. I just wanted to let you know that Mr. Gurney and I have sat with our upper management and told them where we are on that and that we are very unhappy right now. So we did give them kind of a hard deadline at the end of this month that we need to see some change or they're gonna see some change. So, thank you.
In all fairness to that, as we're making adjustments, I know we had some parents that were trying to see if they could drop their kids off early. I understand that was something that was requested. We were able to make that work. I know that's helped out a few families. But also as far as custodian, when I'm reading through the packet and we were talking about it, you guys were already working on it. You guys have already had the meeting with them pretty much saying, hey, you're on the short leash, we're gonna fix this or you're out. And I I'm glad that you guys were already doing that to take care of things for these kids, so. Thanks, guys.
I just echo that sentiment that when I saw those grades in the report, first thing I did was contact you and you already said you're on it. So that's, it's good to hear.
Okay. Terry, anything else you'd like to share with us tonight before I move over to Lincoln?
No, thank you. No.
Good answer. I like that answer. I know you've been patiently waiting, Lincoln. How you doing over there?
Pretty good.
You're up.
I have nothing further to add to my report. However, if you didn't know, yesterday was National IT Professionals Day, so I like to give a special shout out to Javier, Joe, Josh, and Doug. I appreciate you guys, everything you guys do. That's all, that's all I got.
Not only did I know it, I knew it because somebody put it on Facebook. And, and I saw a fair amount of teachers and other people commenting nice, happy things to the people that are helping to support them. So I I think that that just goes to show how much effort they put in to make all this work.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Principal reports, principal reports were included in your information. Anna, would you have anything you'd like to share regarding the Lincoln Way Special Education Minutes?
Well, Mike, Mr. Romeo said most of it, but he laughed already, but.
Yes, he did. But he did a nice job and it was nice he was here.
He did a great job. I was excited for everybody to meet him finally. So I was very happy to see him here tonight. And on finance, the financials, not too much. Cash flow is in line with expectations. It is really too early to determine the budget versus actual, but Mr. Engler does not see anything unexpected. And the district should have received their estimated transportation bill one month on August 1st with a due date of September 1st. Districts will get billed for actual costs from here on out. And that is it.
Any questions for Anna? Thank you very much, Anna. I I know that's a passion project for you. Work really hard on it. Thank you. We had one, two, three, four, five, not six, seven. We had five FOIA requests and they have been handled. That being said, items for the October 15th agenda.
Do we have to, if we are making adjustments to the policy committee, should we have that as an action item?
What?
For if we, if we decide option one or two, if we change the way that it's structured? Do we, we can talk about that separate if you want, but you know how I outlined the two different options? Option one is the one that's in place, but if we, you know, I'm not sure where folks are leaning.
Well, how about we talk about, we can figure out what part of the agenda it should be featured in next month? Whether it's discussion or where it normally is on the agenda, how about we talk about that? Okay?
That works great.
Glad that helps. Anybody else? That being said, we already talked about a few things that will be there for next month. That's great. Next, let's follow related discussion action. I'm for the good of Mokena. Would somebody like to share some good news tonight? I know we started the evening with some nice news and I'm glad to see that. Would anybody else like to share some ideas for, oh, I got something for the good of Mokena. We've got Volley for the Cure coming up. I know it's in October. I want to say it's the seventh, but I'm probably wrong. October 8th. Nice. And she's awesome and it's nice that she's doing that.
Is the store open, right? The online store? The online store is open?
Until September 20. So, so hey, you got, you got three days left. You got three days left to order some nice looking t-shirts. I hope a good cause. Is that a good plug for you? It's a nice cause and it's a lot of fun. You see all these kids there, you see a lot of people from the community. It's a wonderful thing and I'm glad Michelle's running it. She's awesome. Okay. So I wanted to share that because I knew it was coming up. Any other items, guys? up. Any other items, guys?
I would like to just, Mr. Munch's report was really, really good, highlighting dates to put on your calendar for band.
Yes.
And so the first concert, we'll, it's after the next board meeting, but still, give you a heads up, is October 23rd. And then just a thank you to all the coaches. The list of coaches and activities that are going on at the junior high is impressive and they're all doing really well. So I just want to shout out to the coaches.
And between the coaches and the clubs and everything else, there's a lot of activities our students can participate in. I love that. Okay. That being said, we are gonna go to closed session. Yo, yes. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Pardon? Oh, yes, yes. Thank you. Thank you.
It is October 5th, 7:30 to noon.
Hey, Pancake Breakfast, October 5th, 7:30 to noon. At the fire station.
I, I was thinking about volleyball.
Station one.
My mind wasn't on pancakes just yet. I apologize. But that's a nice thing and it's at the firehouse. A lot of families come to that. It's a very nice thing. Thank you for helping me with that. Oh, boy. Okay. That being said, it is 8:47 PM. I moved that the Board of Education adjourned to closed session. We're gonna take a 10-minute recess before we get going. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night. Thanks for joining us.